Okay, we're gonna open the public hearing. And we're opening at 6:12. And I'll read the agenda. We're gonna have a public hearing to discuss to amend zoning bylaws to prohibit all types of marijuana establishments within the town of Deerfield with the exception of the medical marijuana treatment centers. Number two is to discuss a proposal to amend zoning bylaws to permit certain marijuana facilities and operations in accordance with applicable Massachusetts law. The full public hearing notices and the complete text of the proposed bylaws are available at the town hall. Next would be new business. The planning board will discuss possible changes to town bylaws regarding two-family dwellings, dimensional requirements, storage standards, accessory apartments, drive-through windows, and signage. And then finally, any other business not reasonably anticipated 48 hours to the posting of this meeting. And we'll set the date for the next meeting, and then we will adjourn. Okay. So, I guess what we'll do is we'll start on the first public hearing, and that is to discuss the amendment to prohibit all types of marijuana establishments within the town. Adam, do you wanna speak to that first?
Sure. So, thank you, members of the board. Hello again. We've had a few, a series of informational meetings, as you know, relative to what the legislature is calling adult use or recreational marijuana. And as you just mentioned, there are a couple of proposals that are before you tonight for a public hearing, both of which are proposed to be on the upcoming town meeting warrant. One of these, and the one that you've asked me to address first, is something that I've entitled, and I believe you have before you, and there may also be copies available for others who are in attendance tonight, entitled "Bylaw Amendments and Accompanying Ballot Question." And we've got a proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw that would result in an outright prohibition of all types of adult use or recreational marijuana establishments. Excluded from that list are medical marijuana establishments, which of course are already permitted pursuant to your bylaw. You made an amendment a number of years ago that allowed for those to be located within your, what's currently referred to as your medical marijuana overlay district. So, this article consists of a single section essentially that makes a modification to your table of principal uses. It makes reference specifically to a quote-unquote "marijuana establishment," which is a defined term under the statute, and it indicates that these sorts of facilities are prohibited. And there is in fact a footnote that references Chapter 94G, which is the new chapter in Massachusetts general laws that addresses adult use marijuana. It was a consequence of the November 2016 ballot initiative that was then modified by the legislature in mid-2017. And it says that "all types of marijuana establishments are prohibited within the town of Deerfield." And then it goes on to state explicitly that that includes marijuana cultivators, marijuana testing facilities, marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana retailers, marijuana social consumption operations, and all other types of licensed marijuana-related businesses. And then goes on to say, "but expressly excluding medical marijuana treatment centers." The last sentence is an important one. It's something I made you aware of when I've been before you the past three meetings, which is that the adoption of this sort of a bylaw in and of itself by town meeting, even with your recommendation, would not affect a prohibition. When the legislature modified the statute in 2017, they provided for a two-part process in municipalities that voted to support the legalization of recreational marijuana. And that two-part process, in order to prohibit it in your community, or any single type in your community, begins with a prohibition bylaw of the sort that I just described, but then also requires that the question be placed on a ballot for the vote of the residents. And only if the question is successful, the article is successful, and the warrant at town meeting, and a majority vote is obtained at the polls, would the prohibition then be effective. And that's what that last sentence references in the bylaw, where it says that "the prohibition shall be effective only upon passage by the voters at a regular or special town election." So that would need to be the second part of the process. So, here tonight, we're discussing the bylaw. We're discussing your recommendation with respect to that bylaw. That recommendation will be made known to the voters at town meeting. Town meeting will then vote to either accept or reject the warrant article. If they accept it, there's then a question of whether or not the voters would accept that prohibition as well. And for that to happen, it would need to be placed on the ballot. That's a process that is within the control of the select board.
Okay.
That's all I have, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you might have, or members of the public might have throughout the course of the night tonight.
Okay. And just to make clear that there's also a set of bylaws that we have looked at that would allow it in the town, and the rules and regulations for that as well. But I think if anybody wants to speak to this, this is a public hearing, so people can get up and come to a microphone and express your opinions.
This is on the prohibition.
This is on the prohibition, right.
I'm Carolyn Ness, Board of the Selectmen and Board of Health. I'd just like to say that it's kind of like the bus has left the station. I myself personally voted against legalizing marijuana because I felt, you know, we didn't have like a breathalyzer kind of test to regulate marijuana. But, you know, it was voted overwhelmingly in town and in the state. And out of the 351 towns, there are only 59 towns, they're mostly on the east, that prohibit it. Around us, there is no one. There is, in Western Mass, there's Williamstown. Obviously, from what I understand, people just didn't want college kids in overabundance of shops in the town with the college there. And then Ludlow, and East Long Meadow, and I don't know, and Wilbraham. I'm not really sure what the story is down there, but there is nobody around here. The rest are just prohibitions that will expire July 1st, the majority of them, or December. And they're only there for the moratorium to, you know, provide more time for planning. We have made a real effort to roll this out very conservatively. You're using the same overlay district that we have for medical marijuana, and it just doesn't make sense for us to not use our biggest asset, which is our police department. John Pachorek is probably, well, I know he's probably the best police chief in the county, and if not, in all of Western Mass, but based on my being on the Western Mass Homeland Security Council and working with police chiefs there. And I have full faith that he can handle any security issues that come forward. And we also have, working for us, Brian Ravish, who is our resource officer. And for the last couple of years, he has really, really done a great job building relationships with kids. And it's really important that our educational plan, which is part of the licensing process and the host agreement that the select board oversees, be able to be implemented in our schools. And I feel very strongly that not using our assets, our best assets, is a mistake. So I do not support this prohibition.
We're going through that first, and then we'll do the other afterwards.
Do we want to?
We're going to be discussing this, but then, once this is done, then we'll discuss the other side.
Okay.
So, you can take over.
Yep.
You're the vice chairman.
I just wanted, yeah, sorry I'm late.
Is there anybody else while he's?
Is there anyone else that wants to speak to that point? Sorry.
And if you could tell your name, that would be helpful.
Hi, I'm, can you hear me? I'm Lili Dwight. I'm at 45 South Mill River Road in South Deerfield. And I'm opposed to this amendment, and it's mostly a personal thing. I think it's kind of ridiculous. I think the town stated pretty clearly what we wanted. But also, every spring, my family and I walk up and down our road and pick up the beer bottles, the liquor bottles, the cigarette packages, and the lottery tickets that are strewn along our roadside, okay? Personally, I find that a lot more disgusting than somebody smoking pot and eating pizza. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm gonna get off and talk. I'm very shy, but I'm not gonna be shy about my talk tonight.
Sure. And what's your name, ma'am?
Carol Crafts. I'm a resident. I live on 59 Mill Village Road. I am totally against this town having marijuana, selling it, raising it, having anything to do with it. People say that it is not an addictive drug. It might not be for some people that do not have the propensity to become addicted, and other people do have the propensity to become addicted, and they go on to take stronger and more potent drugs, therefore, ergo, becoming an addict. I have listened on TV as much as I can to the meetings, and that's why I came tonight, to thank you, Kip, for giving at least us the option to opt out of this plan. I have nothing against the medical marijuana for people that are ill, and it does help a lot of people. There is a reason that it helps a lot of people, and the reason is because it is a drug. It's probably a safer drug than the hardcore stuff that people are taking and dying from. But I love this town. I just moved here not too long ago, and I hate to see it turn into something that could actually blow up in our faces. I know there's a lot of people that are for this, but I just was wondering, when this was voted on to have it, if the people realized all that it encompasses and involves. Also, how much benefit are we gonna get from the taxes that we draw in from this, the sales of this marijuana? Does anybody know? Does anybody have an idea, after we pay all the other expenses that we might incur?
I'm sure there are some people that have an idea, but I don't really know for sure.
Because I think that was a big, one of the big reasons why people voted for it. They figured it's really hard for everybody. Taxes are going up, and people's income isn't, and it's getting harder and harder for everyone. But I'm just wondering if anybody really looked into that, because if we're not gonna get that big of an income from it, you know, if the other towns around us are all gonna have it and sell it, anybody that wants to can go to that town and buy it. It's not like that they're not gonna be able to get it. And I'm also thinking, how much, how many people are gonna be using marijuana when every single town is gonna be having the places to sell it and grow it? And that's just my concern. And if I hurt anybody's feelings by coming up here, I'm sorry. But that's just the way I feel. I hate to see Deerfield turn to that. There's gotta be other ways that we can raise revenue besides turning to growing and selling marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll speak. My name's Trevor McDaniel, Board of Selectmen and Board of Health, and I'm so glad you came up to speak. I really appreciate you voicing your opinion. So, I'm speaking in favor, and the reason I'm speaking in favor is because we already are gonna incur those costs. The costs are gonna be here no matter if we pass it or not. And so my feeling is, if we can get whatever revenue from it, so we can fund our police department and educate our kids about the dangers, and work with a host agreement to bring some education dollars into our schools, to work with our social workers, guidance counselors at school, and the nurses, and our school resource officer, to start to, and with our police department, to start addressing some of the costs that are already gonna be here to begin with, and to ignore that that's not gonna happen, that we aren't gonna have costs already incurred, and have no source of revenue, and no control over the education of our kids, or monetary help to educate our kids. It just, we're blind to that fact. It's already here.
Trevor, just so I can clarify, you're not in support of the prohibition, but you're in support of the next one that we're gonna talk about.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Bruce? I do not agree with allowing the recreational portion of the marijuana in the town. I guess, I know everybody's got tax on their mind and other possible benefit, but I guess I just don't understand the policy of this town. When the Board of Health has passed regulations, it basically bans even the sale of tobacco over a long period of time, and yet you're going to turn around and allow marijuana as a smoking base as well. It seems kind of contradictory on, in the overall scheme of things. And so therefore, on that grounds, we already have too many, quote, "impaired drivers." We don't need another group of impaired drivers. There's enough of it is. We have all sorts of laws for alcohol, guns, drugs, and everything else. Laws don't do a lot of good, okay? They protect the innocent people to a certain degree. But I'm more concerned with another layer of impaired drivers out on the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Dick Evans. Just a question. Has the board determined what the costs to the town are likely to be by accommodating regulated licensed marijuana in town? And has the board determined what the actual threats to the public health and safety and character of the community are to, what those threats are to the community? And if so, could you tell us?
I don't believe the town has assessed the cost of what it would, you know, be to the town.
But maybe you also wanna speak to Mrs. Crafts' question on what is the town benefit from it?
Oh, well, because lots of things.
Money-wise, she was asking. And you may have some of the answers. If you don't, somebody else might.
Oh, certainly. I was starting with the revenue, but I would also point out the other benefits of legalization. Other communities have enjoyed property values have gone up. In some cities, opioid dependence has gone down. You can, you know, do a Google search and find the benefits of legalization in those cities and towns in Colorado and Oregon, and it's not too hard to find. But I think it's premature to make a decision before you've examined what those benefits actually are, and also identified what those costs are. I think she raised an excellent point. She said, "We've gotta determine that the benefits exceed the costs." Well, what are the costs? No one seems to have looked, asked that question.
Youth addiction.
Sorry?
Youth addiction.
Well, I'm talking about the financial cost.
The financial costs, to me, are minimal versus the human cost.
Well, I don't think, I don't think you'll find that that has been a cost in any community that has legalized marijuana. I've studied it pretty closely. I've never seen that listed.
Well, the data that I'm seeing coming out is Washington and Colorado are not what you say.
Well, I.
I guess there's two sides to each coin, right?
Perhaps, perhaps. But I think that before you pass a prohibition, you ought to identify the actual, the real threats, not just the vague ones, you know? Lots of people don't like marijuana, but we litigated that in November of 16. You know, we had an election, and 56 or so percent of this community said yes to legalization. I think that's, they, the community has made the decision then. Now, the question comes down to the planning board to do some planning, and to ascertain what the costs are, ascertain what the risks are, and to make a recommendation to the community. And you haven't done that yet. Because of that, I think it's a little premature to move forward with this measure. Thanks.
Thank you. Just to clarify something, the planning board is not making a decision whether or not it's going to happen or not. We're just going over the bylaws that are gonna be put in place to regulate it, if it does go in.
Yes.
The other question that was first was whether there'd be a moratorium. The planning board is not also gonna make that decision. We're just saying that the people of our community should make that decision.
I understand, but you're making a decision as to what to recommend to the selectmen, and then to make for a warrant article, aren't you?
Correct. This board's not making that decision. We're just recommending, or.
You're deciding what to recommend.
We're deciding that, you know, if these bylaws go forward, let the people make the choice. A lot of information's changed over the last two years. You know, some people are still for it, some people are against it, and, you know, at least I'm neutral on this board. I just wanna make sure everybody's informed and let the people make the decision. If it's great, it's great. If it's bad, it's bad. And I think that if any board makes a decision for the community and it gets bad, it's on that board. But if the people make a decision and it goes bad, well, it's on the whole community.
But that's why I have a board, doesn't it?
Yep.
We have a board to do some planning.
Yep.
That's your job.
That's right. That's what we're doing. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Kip, I was just hearing you speak. I don't think we have a moratorium option here at all. We're just either prohibiting or allowing. I don't think we've got a moratorium vote.
Prohibition.
Yeah, just prohibition, yeah. Yeah, okay.
Okay. My name's Mark Falone, 103 South Mill River Road. The last time I was at the planning board meeting, I don't know if I missed something, but I thought everything was about the zoning for cultivation, and it seemed that everybody was widely in favor of changing the zoning so that the RA district would allow for cultivation, outdoor cultivation. Did I miss, I was just wondering if I missed something?
Not as widely as you might think.
What's that?
Not as widely as you might imagine.
At the.
Oh, okay. So, so what's happened now?
At one of the meetings, Mark.
What's that?
At one of the meetings, the board voted to have options to put onto the thing. So one of them is prohibition, and one of them is to allow it and to regulate it.
And so this is just another one.
So we're dealing with two different things here. So we started with the prohibition first, and then we'll go to the next one.
What's the next one?
And what you're welcome to speak, that is to go with the zoning, which we've got set up to allow marijuana recreational sales in the town of Deerfield.
Okay, so.
So that's.
Not related to this issue of the prohibition? And the prohibition is whether or not we're going to put it to vote? Is that what it is?
Well, I believe, maybe Adam could explain the process better than I can, but.
So I think what was said is correct. We're dealing with two separate bylaws that are before the planning board for recommendation tonight. We decided to take them in sort of reverse order from the manner in which we've been dealing with them at the informational meetings. What we're discussing now is the prohibition, and that's a simple bylaw that consists of a single paragraph within the zoning bylaw that will prohibit all marijuana establishments. Cultivation, retail, testing, manufacturing, all marijuana establishments would be prohibited in the town of Deerfield. That's option one, and the board will be asked to make a recommendation on that option for consideration by town meeting. It would need to be paired by a vote at the polls, which is something that the selectmen would need to, the select board would need to opt to put on the ballot. What we will discuss next, once we've concluded with public comment on this topic, is the second bylaw, the one that we've been working on for the better part of the past three meetings, which is a much lengthier bylaw, it's six or seven or eight pages now, that regulates marijuana. Regulates cultivation, regulates sales, testing, manufacturing, provides for those uses in different districts, provides for a variety of preconditions that would accompany each of those uses if they were to be allowed by the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So in response, I think it was Carol, is that, is it you? Carol? So in response to Carol's objection to having the widespread use of marijuana, particularly with use which other people are bringing up, John also brought up about youths using marijuana. So the use of marijuana and the legalization and legalization of marijuana are certainly unknown and unproven, and I don't think, I know John said he had some, you said you had some data? Did you have?
Well, yeah, there's data that comes out of Colorado and Washington, and.
Has anybody brought any data?
I have been sending it in to the planning board.
Okay. So my thought on the thing, just from a legalization and voting for legalization or not legalizing it in general, is that there is widespread use of marijuana in the whole entire country, and particularly in Massachusetts, and particularly in Deerfield, and I think everybody is aware of that. The act of bringing it to being legal as opposed to being illegal, the people that would want it to remain illegal would be drug dealers, gangsters. I mean, this is where they're gonna get their revenue from. The people that would be most against legalization would be drug dealers and gangsters, because that will dry up their revenue. And we're proposing, or what the state is proposing, is that the town community would then benefit from what's happening anyway. People that are gonna smoke marijuana are gonna smoke marijuana. People that aren't gonna smoke marijuana are not gonna smoke marijuana. Making it legal or not, I think if anything, if you look at what's happened in Amsterdam, forget about Denver for right now, in Amsterdam, if the up-and-coming people, you go to a coffee shop there, they're not smoking marijuana. Making it legal doesn't make it more acceptable. It's not necessarily make it more acceptable, especially in the long term. And if we can do what would be a good proposal from the planning board or from the town, education, taking the money and putting the money and whatever this money is, a tax income, I would say would be able to approach a million dollars in this community. And could the town use an extra million dollars in tax revenue to educate about drug use, to help out with the things that, the school, the playgrounds, other things that are going on in town? And that's really the issue about legalizing and not legalizing. Not about use, because people that are gonna use it are gonna use it. They're not gonna not use it because it's illegal, and they're not gonna use it because it's legal, in my opinion.
My understanding of what Adam has done is that we can't prohibit the use of it in the town, but we can prohibit to have it sold in the town. And I think that's all this has to do with, is prohibiting cultivation and sales of marijuana in Deerfield, but we can't go against the law.
Oh, no. I was just saying is that the, from Carol's, Carol's opinion of it was that she really doesn't want it to be widespread and expand the use of it, where the issue of legally selling it, you're not gonna get any revenue if this prohibition goes through. Is that correct?
Correct.
Right.
Zero revenue versus revenue. And as far as illegal dealing or legal dealing, I don't know about that, because, you know, what's happening in the community, as you said, the whole county.
So if I understand you correctly, you think the town could generate a million dollars in revenue from this?
Yes, in long term.
So that means their sales, the sales in this town alone would have to be $30 million?
Correct.
Thirty-five million dollars.
And nobody has said that it would be 3%, correct?
Right. The state's looking at one and a half percent.
I believe that they're talking about that, but.
And when you're talking about revenue, you're talking about all revenue for the town?
Well, there is other revenue.
And you haven't discussed it yet with the people that want to propose this? So, yes, my opinion is you would be upwards of a million dollars in revenue for the town.
Interesting.
If you care about the town, I think that that's a good decision to do it, and the town has already voted. If you want, I mean, I'm a little unclear about, I heard what Adam had said, but that the prohibition would then go to town meeting and then decide whether it gets put on the ballot for the fall? Is that correct?
No, if it, yeah, if it passes town meeting, then it has to go to ballot.
Then it goes to the ballot.
And then the people of town have to vote.
And so I'm not either for or against that, because if the town is against it, then the town's against it. But I thought the town already voted for it, so I'm wondering why we're going back and forth.
They did. That's why we have to take a second ballot.
Yes, I'm wondering why we're going back and forth on that.
That's why it has to go to a second ballot, because the town did support it.
Yeah. Oh, that's why it would have to go to the ballot, not just to the town meeting.
Yes.
Okay. So anyway, I am for the original vote that the town had and against the prohibition.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak? Sure.
Hi, Lili Dwight again. I jumped online because I thought that was a really good question about the revenues and stuff, so maybe this will be helpful. As of 2016, in Colorado, the marijuana taxes include a standard 2.9% sales tax, plus a 10% special marijuana tax, and a voter-approved 15% excise tax on wholesale marijuana transfers. And they, for 2015, they just, there's $996 million for the whole state of Colorado with. which, when you divide it by the population of Colorado, which I thought might be more meaningful to us, is about $178 per resident in taxes that's raised through marijuana. Now, that might be different because in 2015, you know, Colorado was one of the few states that was doing it, so they probably had a lot of visitor taxes as well, but still, I thought that might be helpful information.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak to that issue? Nope.
Stephen Testrich. I don't think the prohibition amendment is really a forward-looking concept, and the town just, you might as well get on board with what's going on and figure out how to benefit from this, rather than just being this sort of isolated little protest town or something. But, yeah, there are a number of towns I've heard that do have a local sales tax or some other special thing that the town would directly benefit by, that could be perhaps integrated into the plan so that there isn't a, just a cost. So people just talk about, you know, monetary cost. Obviously, your social costs issue is very debatable, and seeing as how, let's say, from this location here at the town hall, I can go to a package store and about four different bars within like 300 yards, I don't think there's any sort of case for talking about how the town's somehow a moral integrity is being impugned by this. So let's just move ahead.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Well, okay, do you want, let's move on to the discussion. Is it just for the marijuana bylaws?
Yes.
Adam, would you like to speak to some?
So thank you again. As I had mentioned when I spoke earlier, is that we have a second document, and again, I believe there are copies for the public, that is entitled "A Zoning Amendment for Marijuana Facilities and Operations." And we've spent the better part of our lengthy three meetings, three informational meetings, talking not so much about the prohibition. We knew that would be an option, you said that early on, but talking about the much more complicated task of attempting to regulate marijuana. And so we've done that in a few different ways, through a series of amendments to your zoning bylaw. And I think what I'll do, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, is I'll sort of walk through what you've got for the benefit of those who might be in attendance tonight who weren't here for earlier sessions. I'm not going to go into the level of detail that we've gone into through our various meetings, because you've all been here. Certainly, if you've got questions or the public has questions, I'll be here to answer them. And as I do that, I also want to make reference to a few modifications that I've made even since the version that was before you.
So this should be number four, right?
That's correct. And the real reason for that is, you might recall, when I was last before you, three weeks ago, we were awaiting the finalization of the Cannabis Control Commission's regulations. Those regulations were released in draft form before the first of the year. There were a series of public hearings held throughout Massachusetts to get feedback from the public as to concerns that might be had with those draft regulations. They finalized those draft regulations back on March 9th, I think it was, and those were due to be published on the 23rd, which was this past Friday. And so we now know what the final regulations say, and they differ somewhat, not substantially so, but somewhat in some key aspects, key respects, from what we were working with just a few weeks ago. So I've made a few tweaks to the bylaw just to reflect the current final regulations so that there's a consistency between the bylaw and the regulations, and I'll address those as we go through. So the article is divided into a series of what I've called items. You can see it says item one, item two, et cetera, all the way to item six on the seventh page. And so I'll go through these one at a time, beginning with item one. So item one is simple. It is simply the addition or the replacement of the term "Medical Marijuana Overlay District" with "Marijuana Overlay District" in section 2100, which is a list of your districts. And we'll talk momentarily about why we're changing the name of that district, but the proposal is to just name it the Marijuana Overlay District. Item number two in the article is a series of modifications to your Table of Use regulations. And what we've done is we've added four different uses, each of which is defined by the statute and/or the regulations adopted by the Commonwealth, by the legislature, and then by the Cannabis Control Commission. These phrases each refer to a type of marijuana establishment. So there's a reference to marijuana cultivators, there's a reference to marijuana retailers, there's a reference to independent testing laboratories, and there's a reference to marijuana project manufacturers. And as is the case with any other use in your Table of Use regulations, we have identified, either with an N, meaning prohibited, or with an SP, meaning allowed by way of a special permit, where these uses are prohibited or allowed, in which district. So you'll see that marijuana cultivators are allowed in the residential agricultural district, as well as in the industrial and plant industrial districts. And so they're allowed in all three cases only upon the issuance of a special permit. And so it says SP in those categories, but N because that use is prohibited in the others. Marijuana retailers, you'll see that it says N across the board. That's because they're prohibited in all of the underlying districts, and I'll clarify that in a moment. And then you'll see that independent testing laboratories and marijuana product manufacturers are prohibited in every district except the expedited permitting district, where they're allowed by special permit. There's then a footnote here, two footnotes actually. One is footnote number nine, which simply says that it is the planning board that is acting as a special permit granting authority for marijuana establishments, but not for medical marijuana treatment centers, which will still be allowed by the selectmen. And then footnote 10, which says that certain marijuana establishments, most notably marijuana retailers, which it shows above are prohibited in all of the underlying districts, will be allowed by special permit in the Marijuana Overlay District. So that's the purpose of item two, is to designate where these uses might be allowed. Item three makes a series of changes, well, I guess really just two changes, to footnote eight in the dimensional requirements. Footnote eight previously had provided a standard, a distance measurement for medical marijuana treatment centers from schools and other areas where children may congregate. My modification, as of just three short weeks ago, essentially said that the distance would be measured both for medical marijuana treatment centers and for these medical, or excuse me, for these marijuana establishments, non-medical, within a radius of, shall not be cited, within a radius of 500 feet of either a public or private school, daycare center, or any facility in which children commonly congregate. And then I indicated the standard by which this distance would be measured was from the nearest point of the facility to the nearest point of the medical marijuana treatment center or marijuana establishments. I've made two minor modifications to the language, just specifying the manner of measurement, which is now from the property lines of these facilities. That's because they made that change to the regulations when they issued them in final form, so I've clarified it. The second thing I've done, and it's only a notation here, and I leave it to your discretion as to whether you see fit to modify this, when the final regulations issued, they changed the language with respect to measurement, and they simply said that this 500-foot radius would be measured from kindergarten and K through, I guess K through 12 kindergarten and first grade through 12th grade schools. They didn't make reference to daycares, they didn't make reference to other areas in which children commonly congregate. They struck those from the radius determination. An interesting statement was made, and I got this secondhand, but I think it's accurate because I've heard it from a couple of people. The commissioner of the Cannabis Control Commission and one of the members on the five-member commission, as well as an attorney with another municipal firm that has specialized somewhat in recreational marijuana guidance to municipalities, stated at a public forum just a couple of weeks ago, that I was in attendance at, but I was not in this particular session, that there was the ability on the part of municipalities to reduce the distance, maintaining this K through 12 standard, but reduce the distance, the radius, but not to increase the distance, not to further specify that the distance could be measured not just from K through 12, but also from other areas where children congregate, also from daycares. We've since had, me and another in my firm have since had conversations with that commissioner, pushing back a bit on that point. We think that's inconsistent with the Home Rule Amendment. Generally, the rule in Massachusetts is that legislative authority is a floor and not a ceiling. If you want to make something more restrictive, you certainly have the ability to do that through the zoning power. I don't see why, if you're permitted to determine where these facilities can be located and place them in individual districts or overlay districts, why you then couldn't establish a radius that was greater than the 500 feet that's provided for, by the statute, or provide a radius from other areas where children congregate? Why couldn't I simply have a map drawn with an overlay district that excludes all those areas that are, say, 1,000 feet or 1,500 feet from where children congregate? I think the concern that the CCC has is that these restrictions are going to be so prohibitive, 1,000, 2,000, 3,000-foot radii, that essentially it's going to be a de facto prohibition of the use. When you start considering all the areas where children may congregate in communities that have multiple schools, before you know it, they can't go anywhere. That's not what we're dealing with here. You're maintaining the 500-foot radius, you've expanded the criteria somewhat to include daycare centers and other areas where children congregate. I don't have issue with that. Knowing your town as I do, and knowing your underlying districts and your overlay district, I still think that there'll be adequate areas where these are permitted. But I defer to you as to whether you've got that concern. I guess the worst that happens is somebody challenges it, and that portion, that radius would, would fall if the courts were to essentially side with the position of the, of that commissioner as of today. But this is just the reality of doing business in today's environment with recreational marijuana, with it, with it being so fluid and sort of constantly changing. And that's the latest interpretation, but I wanted to bring that to your attention so you'd be aware of it. Item four in the list is simply a series of changes to what is currently the Medical Marijuana Overlay District. So this district has existed for a number of years in Deerfield. We're not eliminating the district, we're doing a few things to it. We are, number one, renaming it from the Medical Marijuana Overlay District to the Marijuana Overlay District. Number two, we're clarifying that medical marijuana treatment centers are allowed in certain locations, depending upon what they're doing. So cultivation-only facilities are allowed in the cultivation districts, which is residential, agricultural, industrial, and plant industrial. Medical marijuana treatment centers for manufacturing and processing are allowed in the EPD. And medical marijuana treatment centers are also allowed in the overlay district. We are clarifying that permitting shall be either through, state permitting, licensing, I should say, is permitted either through the Department of Public Health or effective December 31st of 2018 through the Cannabis Control Commission, which will be assuming the authority for that process. We've included a transferability provision similar to what we're going to adopt, or we're proposing to adopt momentarily for recreational facilities. It says that these licenses are not transferable, these permits are not transferable. And then finally, we're deleting any other reference that exists within the section to the Medical Marijuana Overlay District and replacing it with a reference to the Marijuana Overlay District. So much of that is for clarity, so that we can use the district, the overlay district, not only for medical, but also for recreational. Item five, the second to last item in the article, goes on for several pages. This is really the crux of marijuana regulation for delta use, anyway, that we're proposing for Deerfield. And you know it all too well, because we've been through it in some detail over the past few meetings. So I'll just touch upon the section topics. 4661 on page three just speaks generally about the purpose, mimics the statute to some extent. 4662 includes different definitions for the types of marijuana establishments. I've taken these definitions, or I've at least adapted them, from the language of the statute or the regulations. I have made a change, and this surprised some people, not to change so much, but the reason for my change. On page four, to marijuana social consumption operations. You'll remember that I described these social consumption operations, which is an unusual term for them, but they're marijuana cafes, what we've all been calling marijuana cafes for a few years now. The idea of one's ability to smoke marijuana, to purchase marijuana, and smoke marijuana on the premises of a, of a particular locale. These were addressed in passing, they didn't use the term "social consumption operation." They were addressed in passing in the legislation itself, which simply said that if municipalities would like them, they have to vote to allow them, that they're otherwise considered to be prohibited. But in the regulations that were issued back at the end of 2017, there were a series of provisions that addressed, addressed social consumption operations, provided a definition for that terminology, and then provided for a manner in which they would be licensed through the Cannabis Control Commission, and then essentially addressing things like local control over these facilities, the same way that they address local control over other sorts of marijuana establishments. When the new regulations issued just a couple of weeks ago, the final regulations, what was interesting is that suddenly there's no definition for marijuana social consumption operations any longer. Suddenly, there are no provisions, with the exception of a couple of passing references, to social consumption operations any longer. And in guidance documents that the Cannabis Control Commission's issued, they've essentially said, maybe I'm, maybe I'm paraphrasing here, it got too complicated. We're not, we're not there yet. So they deferred to a later date, regulation of social consumption operations. So the regulations no longer address them.
Wow.
So, good news is, the legislation that issued in mid-2017 did address them and said if you want to allow them, you've got to, you've got to go the route of actively allowing them through a vote. And so there's no concern that, well, what if one pops up on the corner? There's no licensing process, so I'm not sure how one would, but can't happen because they're not regulated yet under the, under the regulations. The bad news is, we really have no sense as to what that licensing process is going to be like, whether they're going to be considered a subcategory of marijuana retailers, which there was some confusion before as to whether they were or weren't, based upon how they were addressed in the regulations. We don't have answers to these questions. We just know that they're no longer referenced in the regulations. And so what I thought was appropriate is not to remove the references in your bylaw, because you wanted them in there to specifically say that they wouldn't be allowed. But I've still used the same terminology, but I've slightly tweaked the definition because I don't want to be too specific in saying that it's an entity licensed by the Commonwealth, because I'm not really sure what that licensing process is going to be. I presume, I can't imagine that there wouldn't be a licensing process for social consumption operations, but we just don't know because the regulations don't address them. So I've simply defined marijuana social consumption operations as an entity that purchases or otherwise acquires marijuana from a licensed marijuana establishment and sells single servings of marijuana to consumers for consumption or use on the premises. Substantially the same as the definition that existed before, but tweaked slightly to be consistent with the fact that it is no longer defined in the regulations.
Now, concerning that, what is the local authority that has to forward it to the state? I assume the state cannot do that without some local authority requesting it? Is that correct?
So there would be a need for a vote if your goal was to allow for these sorts of facilities. If you take no action with respect to the facilities, and we, you've taken action because later on we state that they're explicitly prohibited. But unlike other prohibitions, if you choose to prohibit other types of marijuana establishments, I've already explained, you've got to go to the ballot box with those questions. The way that they wrote the legislation, and it's not the cleanest piece of writing, but the way that they've wrote the legislation for these on-premises consumption operations is that to allow on-premises consumption, you've got to vote it into, into existence. You've got to.
Okay, so let's say, let's say that that happens, then is it, is it like the alcohol and other ones where, isn't the selectmen that, that they apply to and then they have to go to the state and get licensed?
We don't know. The regulations have not even addressed it. The regulations contain two references, which I suspect are maybe unintended leftover references to social consumption, using that terminology, which of course is no longer defined. They contain a couple of passing references, and essentially the passing references amounted them saying that they'll address them at a future time.
Okay.
So we don't know.
Adam, I have a quick question. If someone should come to the town and wanted to apply for a tobacco smoke shop, and we allowed that, but the patrons actually were smoking marijuana, would we lose control over that?
So it's, it's a separate issue. So the concept of smoking marijuana, so when social consumption operations were addressed in the draft regulations and defined in the draft regulations, and even as they are defined here, we're talking about an establishment that purchases from a licensed medical marijuana establishment, licensed recreational marijuana establishment, and then sells a single servings on premises to be consumed.
Right.
There is this issue, and I know it's arisen in a couple of communities in Massachusetts already, of smoking marijuana that you've purchased legally elsewhere in another location. That's something that is not so much a zoning issue, and so it isn't addressed here. How we go about addressing it is a broader question, something that would probably have to be addressed by the selectmen through the adoption of appropriate policies or general bylaws. But it's not something that's a zoning issue, because it's not something that you would explicitly be allowing. You're not allowing for marijuana consumption locations or lounges or anything of that sort in your zoning. But, you know, whether individuals can gather in a private club that is properly permitted and smoke recreational marijuana the same that they, same way that they could in their home, it's, it's an interesting question, and we don't have answers to it yet.
Thank you.
And that legislation, that sort of regulation goes to the select board? Why doesn't it go? Why do we not? I still don't understand that.
Well, it's not zoning regulation, so it's not a question of whether we're zoning for the use.
Yeah, okay, okay.
We're identifying marijuana establishments as a use, we're saying where they can, where marijuana can be cultivated, we're addressing where marijuana can be tested and manufactured, we're addressing where marijuana can be sold, and we're even addressing where marijuana can be sold and smoked on the premises.
Right.
But how do we, through a zoning tool, go about controlling somebody? But how do we, through a zoning tool, go about controlling somebody bringing? It's like attempting to craft licensing for alcoholic beverages as to whether or not I can drink my alcoholic beverage in my home versus bringing it to a private club. Some communities have BYOB regulations that the selectmen have adopted, either by way of bylaw or by way of policy, that address the ability to do exactly that. But it's not really a zoning issue.
Right, okay.
So Section forty-six sixty-three addresses the applicability and talks about the requirement of a special permit in those districts where the use is allowed. Section forty-six sixty-four makes reference to the overlay district that we just amended in the previous item, and talks about the different types of uses that would be allowed in the underlying or overlay district. Speaks to marijuana cultivators, product manufacturers, retailers, and testing laboratories. Important notation here and one that we discussed a couple of meetings ago is the fact that marijuana retailers exclude marijuana social consumption operations, which we've still defined up above, and are permitted only until the number of marijuana retailers equals or exceeds twenty percent of the number of licenses issued within the town of Deerfield for the retail sale of alcoholic beverages not to be drunk on the premises. So that's the standard that's contained in the legislation. That's the cap that you're allowed to place on the number of retailers in your community.
Which is what we guessed, that's what, right.
Section forty-six sixty-five is entitled "Dimensional and Performance Standards." It goes on for the better part of a page and a half and addresses the typical sorts of standards that you would apply. Now, in the usual special permit context, you've got these as well. When you evaluate a special permit that comes before your board, you look at various criteria to determine whether or not the applicant and the project satisfies those criteria. With recreational marijuana, we've obviously got unique criteria, so we've attempted to address some of those with some degree of specificity, but also giving the board a degree of discretion in determining whether they're appropriate. I did make a minor change here, and Pat Smith and I were just discussing it before we get underway, because it's a change I made based upon what I perceive to be the plain language of the final regulations. However, there is a document that has been updated as of last Monday, I think it was, that is entitled Municipal Guidance Issued by the Cannabis Control Commission, that suggests that maybe there's no need for the change that I've made here, but I think the safer course is to go with it. Essentially, the issue was, many communities have said, in order to get a special permit from the special permit granting authority for this sort of a use, your facility has to be licensed through the state. So you've got to give to us as part of the permitting process proof that you've gone through the licensing process. There is language in the regulations that suggests that the license won't issue until all municipal approvals are received. Well, how does that work?
Which came first, chicken or the egg?
Well, exactly. The municipal guidance document that issued, which is not in and of itself a regulation, it's just a guidance document, doesn't have the force or effect of law, but it does tell you how the Cannabis Control Commission might act and what they might enforce, seems to suggest that there is no absolute need to have all local permits in hand, so long as the municipality has an opportunity to chime in and state that there's a licensing or permitting process that's required prior to the licensed operation going into effect or into operation. I still think that my change works because my change simply takes out the absolute prerequisite that the license be issued from the state, and adds a new item one that says, "No use of any special permit or site plan approval issued hereunder shall commence nor shall construction of a marijuana establishment authorized hereunder begin unless and until all requisite licenses and approvals have issued, have first been obtained under the statute and regulation." So it gives you the ability to use your discretion. If the applicant indicates to you that it has a license in hand already, great. If it doesn't and says to you, you know, we're three-quarters of the way through the process, but we're not complete yet, you can say, okay, fine, we're prepared to act on your application, but we're going to include a condition in it, consistent with what our bylaw requires, that before you operate or before you even commence construction, you've got to have all requisite licenses in hand. And you could require that they provide evidence of that with their application for a built permit, for example. So it still gives you the same discretion you had before, but it's not quite as absolute as the language I had in the earlier version. I won't go through the better part of page five, but these are just the various standards that we had discussed. Again, I'm happy to address them if anybody has questions. That continues on to page six. Then we get to subsection forty-six sixty-six, which addresses signage. Forty-six sixty-seven, which is that same transferability provision I had referenced that we had added to the Medical Marijuana Treatment Center bylaw that says that there shall be no transfer. Forty-six sixty-eight talks about lapse of a permit if it's not utilized within a year. Forty-six sixty-nine is that prohibition on marijuana social consumption operations, which is an outright prohibition. Again, I would argue not even required based upon the language of the legislation, which indicates that absent a vote allowing them, they're prohibited anyway, but this makes it very clear that they're prohibited. That's all for item five. And then item six, the last item on page seven, is just another of these cleanup items we referenced before in the substance, in the text of the marijuana, adult-use marijuana bylaw, that applicants would require both a special permit and site plan approval. Item six makes a change to section fifty-four hundred of your bylaw, which is the site plan review thresholds, those sorts of projects that are required to get site plan review. This just adds marijuana establishments to that list, so there's no question. It's sort of a cross-reference thing. So regardless of which section you're looking at, you understand that you require site plan approval. And that site plan approval, that site plan review process would be combed, would be combined with your special permit review since they'd both be before the planning board.
It would still be the same site plan review we currently use.
That's correct, that's correct, same process.
Thank you.
So that was a lengthier explanation than I'd hoped for, but that's sort of the substance of what we spent eight or nine or ten hours doing over the past couple of months. So again, I'm not going anywhere. Happy to answer questions that the board members have or the members of the public have.
Well, I have a couple of questions. What happens in a situation where we have a fixed distance of five hundred feet from a daycare center to an establishment, a marijuana establishment? What happens in the case where you have a licensed establishment here, and then the house next door wants to start a daycare? Do you discriminate against the daycare that they can't do that, or do you try to force these people to close?
You can't force the operation to cease because the operation is properly licensed.
So then you would have to tell the people they couldn't open the daycare next door?
I'm not sure what the licensing requirements would be for the daycare, as they relate to the existence of a marijuana establishment in such close proximity. The idea is obviously forward-looking for zoning purposes and determining where these facilities can be located. I'd have to, obviously, this issue hasn't arisen yet in the marijuana context, but I'm not sure that you'd be on solid footing either to deny permission under your bylaw if permission were required for a daycare facility if the applicant were seeking to place the facility in a location once the marijuana establishment was already in operation.
Is there a solution for that, then?
In one of the transcripts I got from the state, I saw that one of the considerations in the, or their rules and regulations were to allow growers to sell directly to consumers. Has that changed, or was it just, it might have been a consideration, but didn't get into the final regulations?
Yeah, they haven't addressed it in the regulations. There's a, terminology is escaping me here, there's microbusiness. So there are microbusiness provisions that contemplate the possibility of combined uses, the idea that you would be able to both grow and sell as part of the same operation. The way that your bylaw is currently structured, we tried to be somewhat more simplistic than getting into, you know, every potential use category. So you might remember that we looked at the Montague model early on and a couple of others that were based upon that. And they had provided for greater specificity with respect to the uses that they added to their table. They didn't just have four uses, they had eight or nine or ten uses and sort of subuses, addressing indoor versus outdoor cultivation, addressing this concept of microbusinesses. The way that your bylaw is currently structured, you essentially need to be in a location where you could both perform the cultivation and the retail in order to qualify as such.
So, I understand that, but I-
Overlay.
So the direct selling, I know that we have an overlay district for that, but if a grower wants to get that microbusiness, then we could deny that?
That's correct.
Because there's only one retail establishment allowed if we have only twenty licenses, right, for the sake of alcohol?
That's correct.
Yes.
That's correct.
Has the state had any final decision on the amount of tax that the local authorities can impose?
Three percent.
It is three percent. And what about licensing fees?
They haven't addressed licensing fees specifically. Generally, in other contexts, licensing fees are permitted. So if there was a license to a process, then reasonable fees would be permitted, I would think. They've not addressed it specifically, to my knowledge.
But it's reasonable fees. You can't, the town couldn't impose a $500,000 fee to license a-
On the last Franklin Planning Meeting, which was last Thursday, if I heard things correctly, the host agreement can include up to three percent, so.
So there's a couple of pieces to this. So in the medical marijuana context, most municipalities, it wasn't a requirement, but most municipalities negotiated host community agreements with these marijuana, medical marijuana treatment centers, or RMDs, registered marijuana dispensaries. And the idea was that in order to get the municipality's acquiescence, because part of the licensing process was that the municipality issue what they called a letter of support or non-opposition, would be that they would negotiate this agreement, and the developer, the applicant, would agree to provide some form of mitigation, usually in the form of payments to the municipality in exchange for the municipality's support. And there are a number of different versions that have been structured in different municipalities. Some are flat fees, some are based upon a percentage. But in many circumstances, they were in perpetuity for as long as the facility was operational. Might begin, most that I saw began with a lesser percentage, like three-quarters of a percent or one percent, and then moved up to as much as three percent in years three, four, or five, and then continued on at that higher percentage on a year-to-year basis. When the new legislation was adopted for purposes of adult-use marijuana, although this provision applies to both medical and adult use, it now requires these host community agreements, requires they be entered into with municipalities, and gives municipalities the opportunity to require payments that are, again, mitigation payments to help sort of soften the blow of a new facility coming into a community and the cost that might be associated with it. I know somebody earlier talked about what are the costs of the community. So what the legislation says is you've got to itemize those costs. You've got to have some justification for why you're going to suffer a cost in the amount of X. But then you can defray those costs and place them upon the applicant, and you can do so for a period of up to five years. Now, our first response to that was, wow, now we're capped at five years. And it said up to three percent in terms of what the cost could be. And so we said to ourselves, okay, well, maybe that means that it's three percent for the first five years because at that point you can then transition it into a three percent sales tax essentially moving forward that'll replace what was the three percent charge under the host community agreement. There are still multiple interpretations as to the host community agreement and what happens after five years. I've heard some say that the agreement itself must expire after five years. I've heard others say that it's only the fee, the mitigation payment, that expires after five years, but the actual agreement itself can continue on. I've heard others say that you can renegotiate the agreement in five years, which seems sort of counterintuitive. If it's maxed out at five years and no payment can be made beyond five years, in five years you could then renegotiate it. I suppose you could if you could continue to justify the cost. I will say, in the medical marijuana context, and I understand medical marijuana is quite different than recreational, some communities have had difficulty justifying the cost of the community. When you've got a medical marijuana manufacturing facility that's inside a building in the industrial park that looks much like any other building in the industrial park, what's the added cost associated with permitting that use versus the widget factory that's next door? There can be some challenges there. Maybe there's some additional security, but beyond that, the additional cost has been somewhat difficult to justify. I suspect it might be easier in the context of recreational marijuana.
Well, we had one resident say, put a value of, say, $30 million on this. Couldn't the town charge a fee for the value of that business, similar to how we do with building permits? I'll just say a dollar per thousand or $10 per thousand. If they come in, they're going to do $30 million worth of business. Couldn't we put a value for that license of $10 per thousand or something? It would be an astronomical figure, but if somebody was going to build a $30 million building, the town would benefit that way, too.
Not based upon the way that the regulations are currently written. The regulations require you to tie that, and it's not even the regulations, it's the underlying statute, requires you to provide justification as to the cost and expense that is being suffered by the municipality. So could you devise a formula for that? Sure, but you would be in a position of having the burden approved to prove that that formula was an accurate reflection of the cost that you'd incur.
But the building permit would be still there?
Building permit, yeah.
Where, I was wanting to come up with that number, and I was basing it on the fact that at the last meeting when I was here, we were talking about allowing cultivation, outdoor cultivation, which I believe, Adam, that they are allowing the sale of that product to facilities, that would be retail facilities in East Ridge, Georgia State. And as a farming community, I wouldn't see why they're going to be able to produce that kind of revenue based on, not on retail. I don't think you're going to be $30 million.
But that's not taxable. The grow isn't taxable. Only the retail is taxable.
Is that true, Adam?
That's correct, based on gross sales, sales to the public, not transfers.
Great.
Hi, Craig Behrner, South Deerfield. We have so many audience, can answer a lot of these questions. Joe Kachery from Harvest Inc., including yours, Carol, about all the different things, about the money, profits, percentages. This guy does it for a living. So if anyone's interested in what he's got to say, I'm sure he can tell you all what you even know.
Thank you. Just to follow up on the language, because I've got it here, the community impact fee, three percent of gross sales to be paid to the host community, as long as the fee is reasonably related to real costs imposed on the municipality due to the establishment of the facility. So that's the language.
The burden of proof is on the town to prove your costs. It's not just, you can't just come up with a random number. Hey, I think, you know, we spent an extra $100,000 in police or whatever. There has to be hard data in order to justify.
That's correct. I guess my only caveat to that is, once challenged, the burden would be on the town. I don't know what the enforcement mechanism would be. I'm not sure to what extent the Cannabis Control Commission is going to be undertaking enforcement action or provide some degree of oversight, but you are correct that if the question was asked and you were put to the test, it would be on the, it would be the burden of the municipality who established that that fee is reasonably related per the statute. That's correct.
Adam, I have a question. It's related, but not necessarily the zoning. Do you have to be a Massachusetts resident to buy marijuana in Massachusetts? You know, say you're wheeling through from New York State. Can you whip into the retail location and buy it as an out-of-state resident?
I believe you can. So with, under the medical marijuana regime, you were required to have an appropriate card because you needed to be a patient that was entitled to purchase medical marijuana. There are no cards for recreational marijuana.
Does anyone else have any questions, Fred? Axe?
Do we have, is there-
So convicted felons, people with history of abusing drugs, they can buy it, too?
Right. I don't think it's being regulated in that respect any differently than-
So, are we gonna, is there provisions for liability insurance for the growers and retailers?
Yes, there are insurance provisions in the regulations.
Rachel?
Internet sales are the, see the thing, that's not in our zoning anything. Just curious.
No, and that hasn't been addressed in the licensing scheme either, the concept of internet sales or anything other than brick and mortar.
Yep.
Not yet.
Are there any other questions from the audience?
So Jeff Bezos gets it.
Yeah, well, Colorado closed that one down, so. Jeff Bezos, Mr. Rhodes.
I'm Anna Lee Wolfcoole from Four Mountain Road, and we've talked some tonight about the cost to the town that perhaps can't be quantified. I'm a frequent visitor to Washington State, and I've kind of been astounded at the billboards, the neon signs, the gated and guarded facilities, if you will, and the changes to the characters of the towns that I've been going through. On page six, section four-six-six-six, talks about signage and says that all signage shall comply with section thirty-two-hundred and thirty-two-thirty. I certainly don't know thirty-two-hundred and thirty-two-thirty, and don't know whether or not it would be appropriate to have those attached as an addendum so that- so that those of us who are evaluating all of this.
You can go online and get the zoning bylaws there. Once, section 179, and they'll, they'll have all that in there.
But just so you know, that, that section wouldn't allow a sign that has more than 32 square feet on either, on the side.
And it couldn't be, it couldn't be internally lit or.
Can't be a neon sign.
Anything like that.
Yeah. Those are, those are what are in our sign bylaws now.
That's for any signs in the town of Deerfield.
Okay, because certainly we would want to make sure that as we're voting on this that we have strong consideration about how the marketing will happen and how that can impact the character of the town.
Could I ask you a question? When you go through these towns in Washington, would you consider it a positive change or a negative?
Oh, absolutely negative. I mean, there's billboards, some of them are even the neon billboards. And then the different facilities are often painted in colors that don't fit with the rest of the character of the main street, whatever.
So it's changed the entire character of the community?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely, you know, yes. And then, of course, lots of wrought iron over all of the windows. And so it, it looks, and this is town after town after town is, and I'm talking about smaller towns probably along the, I can't speak to Seattle or Tacoma, but yeah. Anyway, I would hate to see that happen here. So we go to zoning, well, okay, I just can check out the zoning, signage, and I should be able to.
Yes, if you go to the website, go under the bylaws, you can see that section.
It's probably about 120 some pages long.
No. No. What section? It's.
90 pages.
91 pages.
So then I suppose with 91 pages, I would be, you know, ceding my judgment to the planning board that you are feeling that those signage bylaws are appropriate.
The sound of section 3200, specific to the age of the.
Dick?
First of all, I need to make a quick question.
Cares are regulated by the state.
State.
And they won't approve a site if it doesn't comply with their regulations and it's not a zoning compliance. So that's, I've helped people license a couple of them in town, and they're very difficult to get licensed. I'd like to bring up a couple of subjects, okay? First subject is, well, I've been, I should say I've been working on this for two years with everybody. The first subject I'd like to bring up that was deleted was a five-acre minimum for cultivators. I personally live on an acre and a half, 60,000 square feet. Live in the sections, residential agricultural sections, it could be. If the state changed their regulation down the road, people would automatically be able to plop down a 10,000-square-foot greenhouse on their front lawn in between a neighborhood. So I think eliminating the five-acre minimum from there was a mistake.
Yeah.
Okay? That's all I'll say about that. The second thing, and I'm going to speak for all three of your Board of Health members that are here, and you can interrupt me anytime. Tomorrow, I'm attending a Massachusetts Board of Health meeting in Newton, Mass. It specifically is the Board of Health regulating marijuana inspections of premises, inspections of everything, the health of the workers and all that. And I should come back with, this is from Cheryl Sabaro, the Massachusetts Health Attorney. So I should come back with information on that. So whatever bylaws you passed, and Adam, I ran this by Adam already, whatever bylaws you passed, the Selectman Board of Health will then have to regulate those inspections on top of the bylaws. So just wanted to be aware of that.
Very good.
Thank you.
I remember us having a five-acre minimum. We talked about that, he and I.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Did we have a five-acre minimum at some point? I just don't remember us having that.
It was suggested to us, but we never put it in.
It was suggested, but we never put it in. We got talking about setbacks instead and got diverted from it just because, and we did, you know, I think we did get diverted in the sense that we started thinking, well, if you had the setbacks, you know, it would squoze and that would kind of stand in place of making a requirement of.
I think that somebody at one of our meetings recommended, it may have been Greg, to use common sense in the site plan review and so forth when somebody's applying for something so that you don't put something in there that you know is going to be a problem. And assume that people are going to come in and they're going to say, I'm neighbor next to it. I don't want a four-story building next to my house.
Well, that, that is a, I think that's really tricky. That puts a lot of.
Pressure on.
Pressure on this board. I mean, because, you know, and Adam, I, you might weigh in on this. If, if it stays the way it is and a resident comes to us for site plan review to have a grow facility on their two-acre building lot where they have a lot of close houses.
And they've got all the setbacks.
And, you know, they're, all the neighbors, we don't want this, we don't want this. And so as the board, we say it's not a good fit. Where does that leave us?
Or even, they do want it, the neighbors don't speak up, but we still see it in the wrong place. That's even another possibility.
I mean, you know, it's, it's, they could argue, hey, look, this is a right. You know, I comply with all of your rules and regulations. How, what's the justification for turning us down?
Yeah.
So that last part is the most important part. I heard you reference site plan review. It is important that it's a special permit process in conjunction with site plan review. And the distinction is that.
Yes.
Site plan review nearly always must be approved with few, few exceptions. Whereas as a special permit granting authority, you've got much more discretionary authority. That said, you're right in that objective standards are far preferred to subjective standards because with objective standards, either the standard is satisfied or not, you have the ability even to craft waiver provisions that would allow you to waive those objective standards on a case-by-case basis as deemed appropriate, in which case if you choose not to waive it, you can simply say you didn't meet the objective standard. And I would say nine times out of 10, a court would, would approve that action by the board. With subjective standards, you're applying those on a case-by-case basis, and it is ultimately your burden of proof, if there's a challenge, to establish that you were justified in rejecting in particular a proposal based upon the subjective standard. So I think that, to Dick's point, I think there are certain provisions, and I'm referencing specifically section 4665, beginning on the bottom of page four, onto page five and onto page six, what I've called the dimensional and performance standards, several of these that could be used as grounds to deny a project that was proposed on a 60,000-square-foot plot. I don't see a concern with a four-story high building because remember, if we're talking about cultivation in a residential district, residential agricultural district, you've got to meet the underlying requirements for height. But if there was a proposal to place an outdoor cultivation facility, for example, on that 60,000-square-foot parcel, and there was concerns about, well, it's, you know, you get residential neighbors on both sides and it's going to be smelly or it's gonna, the odors are concerning and the intensity of use of the site is concerning, there are certain provisions that allow you to consider. For example, number six, noise, odor, dust, glare, fumes, vibrations, heat, glare, other conditions. Require odor reduction measures. You could determine that there's no ability to employ those sorts of measures on so small a parcel. You do have minimum setbacks. They're not substantial, so they certainly, certainly wouldn't prevent the use of a 60,000-square-foot parcel. But you've got minimum setbacks that would need to be complied with. You've got minimum separation requirements between marijuana retailers if you're dealing with a circumstance where there's too many retailers being proposed in a particular location, although you're capped at one. So in the short term, that shouldn't be a problem. But there are provisions here, but there are all those sort of subjective provisions. So the burden's on you to establish that if you're going to say no, simply because it's not a good fit, that it's not a good fit because you applied the criteria and you determined that the criteria couldn't be satisfied. That's different than saying, sorry, you don't have a five-acre lot, can't do it.
Yep. Thanks.
I just want to say, Carolyn Ness, Board of Selectmen, Board of Health. I just want to say I support Dick's discussion item of a minimum of five acres just because I feel that's the terminology or the kind of definition that the USDA uses for farm operations. And that's the kind of thing that we are trying to promote here in town, support of our farmers. And so I would say bring back that minimum five acres.
We never had it, that's the thing. It was never on our, so we'd have to add it. I mean, it's my sense.
It was on the original one. It was deleted.
Was it on the very original one?
Yes. Because that was what Dick and I had put on.
Oh, okay. I don't feel like I've seen it for a few iterations, so.
Well, you haven't for a few iterations. It's been an evolving process. So you might remember that when I came to you, what was it, eight weeks ago for the first of the informational meetings? The document that was presented was a document that I had crafted last March, which of course was before the legislation had even been rewritten, that was to provide for marijuana cultivation, primarily cultivation, more so than anything else. And that bylaw proposal had a.
Had a five-acre minimum.
Five-acre minimum requirement as a footnote within the dimensional table. But we quickly strayed from that version.
Right.
And that was a, a page and a half document and came up with something much more extensive in light of the new, the new legislative scheme that exists.
Yeah.
And then I would just like to say, I would hope that you would support the Select Board being the special permitting authority because we are, negotiate the host agreement. We already oversee the process for medical marijuana. And, you know, as, and we supervise the police, which would be, you know, the security aspect of it. And we would want to look at the whole process and be in control of the whole process so we can negotiate the best kind of deal for the town of Deerfield. And I feel that if, if we don't have the whole process, then we wouldn't be able to maximize our ability to have a negotiation on the host agreement and licensing process and the educational part of it, the outreach to the schools and stuff that is part of the licensing process. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Yes, I'm Carol Crafts. I live on Millville Drive.
Would you mind coming up here, Carol? Only because the people in TV land want to hear you.
Carol Crafts, Millville Drive. Where I live, my house right across the street, there is acres and acres of land, all open, huge acreage. I've been told it's under APR. I don't know for sure, but I, I've been told that it is. Has anyone found out if marijuana would be allowed to be grown on land that's been APR'd?
Apparently not, that's what I'm hearing.
I love. Cultural product. That's why we're having this whole discussion, it's not a biode. Okay, great. Okay, because that would be really.
And if you haven't, if you haven't been to the other meetings, Carol, I think it was kind of like a general assumption, it doesn't have to be, but that most of the people that want to grow it here would do it in greenhouses.
Well, that's what I was thinking because growing it outside, you're going to have a big problem with odor. There's no question about it.
I don't think anybody came in here and told us they were going to do it outdoors. I think.
Actually, it would be so bad that you wouldn't even have to smoke it because all you have to do is inhale it and you'd be having a little bit of a high. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I'm Joe Cuchuri. I'm the National Real Estate Director for Harvest Inc. It's a cannabis company. They're based out of Tempe, Arizona, and they're considered to be one of the largest or certainly second or third largest cannabis company in North America. My history with Harvest is they, they're in multiple states. We're vertically integrated, meaning we have cultivation, we have dispensaries, we have extraction, we have PhD chemists, we have PhD botanists on staff. So when we do something, we try to do it at the highest level. I just want to address a couple of things, how we, our company operates. So there was an issue of a sign. So we've had some local representatives come out and flew out to Arizona to see our operations firsthand. The only thing that we have on all of our dispensaries is one name, says Harvest. It's not, it's not orange, it's not bright yellow. It's just a light color, tan, Harvest. And our logo is a harvest wheel, just like you would see in a farmer. We don't even have that all the time. All we have is Harvest. We know for a fact that if somebody is looking for medicine, because it's medical, if they're looking for medicine, they will find us. So we know that. So we don't need to advertise it. And I understand there's other states that they do what they do. We don't subscribe to that. Our, the way we look at our business is we try to be like Apple. If you've been to an Apple facility, it has, it doesn't have any distinctive factors except it's comfortable. If you're 18 or 88, you come in and you buy your wares, and that's what we chose to do. There's no joints in the walls, there's no Bob Marley, there's none of that. That doesn't exist. And I'll be happy to provide a PowerPoint presentation with audio visual or just slides. And again, there's been people from the local community that has come out to visit. Security, that always is an issue, and I don't blame them. Our security is better than a bank, and that's, that's a fact. That's not just a loosely stated word. Our security is greater than a bank. Anytime you drive on our, any one of our facilities anywhere in the United States, five cameras are on you the moment you drive or walk on our property. Every one of our facilities has a greeter. Now, this is something that probably less than 10% of the people in the country have. A greeter is someone that's at the door, they greet you. And they ask you, have you ever been here before? Yes, no? Have you purchased before? Yes, no? And then he directs you. So if you've not been, it goes into, you cannot buy, even if you have a card, even if you're legal. You have to go into a consultation room. We sit with a consultant with us, why are you here today? What is your, what is your ailment? Pain, inflammation, whatever, glaucoma? We sit, and then we go and we recommend. You get to choose. So that's, that's, that is common in everything that we do. We design that in. All of our employees, including myself, went through an FBI background check. Otherwise, you're not hired. Plain and simple. You get a DUI, sorry, can't help you. Banking, a lot of people say, what happens to the cash? What happens to this? What happens to that? And that's a real concern. We have banking nationally with an FDIC, federally regulated bank. Banks are allowed to take money, they just choose not to. So we, probably less than 1% of the entire industry has banking. So that's a securitized situation where an armored vehicle shows up and collects the cash. We pay our taxes through the bank, we pay all our employees through the bank. So we're 100% fully out there visually, so you can see there's nothing that we're doing that's with cash. The last thing I'll say is we have a couple of doctors on staff. They're medical practitioners, and what they are, they specialize in the world of cannabis, in all of what it does. I think there's a big unknown of what, what there is. And I'll leave one topic that this gentleman has taught me. There's 400 characteristics to a plant, only one is the psychotropic, the feel-good. There's 399 characteristics to every plant, and it's to heal you, plain and simple. I'll be happy to fly this man in. He'll give you an hour presentation or a 15-minute presentation. It'll be a Q and A afterwards, and you can ask him any question you want. He's a medical practitioner and just specializes in cannabis. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else has any questions or comments? Okay.
Steve's got his hand up.
Steve?
I just, I was noticing that there's a lot of restrictions on the locations of the facilities and how close they can be to each other and all this. And it seems basically pretty restrictive to the point where it's almost looking like you can only allow one such facility in town, probably. I mean, how far, could there be 2,000?
Is it retail or is it cultivating or is it?
Well, I mean, I guess in terms of, let's say, the retail locations.
You can only have one.
At this point.
So you're already acknowledging that.
Yes.
So there would only be one potential license of store for that store or whatever.
Correct.
Well, that sort of seems to set up a monopoly-like situation.
Carolyn?
Woody, I just want to say, the reason why we set it up like that is to roll it out as conservatively as possible.
All right.
Because we've done, we set it up originally for medical marijuana, and we're just rolling over the overlay district and all the locations exactly the same. It's, it's so that it can be rolled out as conservatively as possible. It doesn't mean that at a later date, you can't, you can't, I mean, it's just like.
So it is not.
It's like package store licenses and you can apply for more at a later date, but.
It's not, it's not restrictive in the, in, that's what you're saying, in the long-term.
No, I mean, people can decide one way or the other later on.
All right. It just seems like it's an unusual to like, set up a situation where the only, there's only going to be one business, a private enterprise, that is. where the only, there's only going to be one business, a private enterprise, that is obviously after profit, but it's the only one allowed in town. It doesn't sound very, I don't know, American and capitalistic.
No, but you know, I just saw in the paper that Greenfield's going to open one up in the old VFW building there. So it, it's, there's plenty of places around here where people can go and get it, if they don't like his price here, wherever.
We'll just say that, but, all right, so there will be some competi-, the thing is, the competition would not be within Deerfield.
No, that's right.
All right, just an interesting restriction on a business. If there's only going to be one such license, maybe you should have an auction for it, then.
Well, this whole thing is a very interesting dilemma.
I know, it's an unusual situation.
On one hand, you know, you, you, there are people who want to bring this, and yet there's, I don't know, it's, it's kind of tricky, because you want to bring it in, but you want to restrict where you can have it. And I think that was, goes to John's point, why, you know, anybody can grow it, you know.
But you said there's, but there's a understanding it's going to be flexible?
Well, in, in reality, whoever is the medical marijuana person in town-
That's going to be it.
Has the first right to be the recreational one as well. So I think at that point, probably that's going to be the only location.
Well, that's what I was seeing, that it's sort of sensing that we're talking about one spot in town. And there's the possible expansion of that in the distant future, perhaps, but-
Yes, could be, yeah.
All right, so the scope of it is really only of one business?
Correct. Well, one retail.
One retail business. I mean, that's what I'm saying, the, the public access kind of business.
Yes.
All right.
I had brought something to my mind here. Adam, if, if say two farmers wanted to produce this and cultivate it, does that, does that apply to them when only one can have it?
No, anybody can.
Well, that's what, that's what I've been asking, yeah.
One retail. So I, I think the important thing to note, and maybe this is why Carolyn has commented on the short versus the long-term nature. So, we've structured the bylaw and what is being proposed for adoption at town meeting to include, and this is really where it starts and where it ends, the provision in section 4664 on page four of the handout, where it allows for certain types of uses within the overlay district, included among those uses is marijuana retailer. Remember, retailers are only allowed in the overlay district. And it says, only until the number of marijuana retailers equals or exceeds 20% of the number of licenses issued within the town of Deerfield for the retail sale of alcoholic beverages not to be drunk on the premises per chapter 138 of Mass General Law. So, I didn't, I didn't devise that language. That language is directly out of the statute, because the statute gives you the ability to cap the number of retail establishments based upon the number of licenses that you've issued for alcoholic beverages, off-premises alcoholic beverages. So, that's how we've capped it. If that statement were not in there, I, I don't think, the way that we've structured the zoning, that we would be limiting marijuana retailers to a single site. In fact, we've been quite careful to zone this in such a way that there are sufficient locations, not just for retailers, but for other types of uses, sufficient number of locations throughout the town where this, this marijuana, adult-use marijuana business could, could occur. And by business, I mean cultivation, testing, manufacture, retail. If you were to limit it entirely to one location in town, I think that the state would consider that to be a de facto prohibition of the use and would be quite the same as you going to the polls and getting the voters to say no, except you would have been making an end run around that requirement, and that wouldn't stand. But we've allowed this to occur in many locations, but for retail specifically, we've limited it to the overlay, and then we said we're only going to issue one.
And so how do we, how do we, keep the saying that if, if five, if five firms wanted to grow it, that they could all apply and get a permit to grow it?
Yes.
Or only one can grow?
To grow, they could all grow. There's only-
Okay, that's what I, that's what I was asking.
Yes, the, the cap, the limitation is only on retail.
For the retail.
Not cultivation, not manufacture, not testing.
That's what I was asking, yeah.
Sorry, that was a long answer to your short question.
Okay, no problem, no problem.
Any other questions or comments? Pat, would it be proper us to close the public hearing now, and would the board be able to ask questions of Adam?
As long as it's not new information.
Right.
I think that would be appropriate, if you have all the information that you want or need to make your decision, you could go ahead and-
Okay. And why don't we go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:46? Anyone want to talk about any of these issues?
Well, I do feel like, and I guess I'm just missed, I kept thinking that the five acre minimum was there. I do think that that's an important distinction for us in terms of-
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Five acre minimum, 4.665, the dimension and, and whatever it's called, restrictions, dimensions, performance standards.
Want to comment on that?
I know we talked about this before.
Yeah, I, I mean, as, as you're aware, I think, I don't see it as a fit for this town, period.
Right.
But if we do put it to vote and the people say, no, we want marijuana, they've said it once before, but I, I think they were misinformed a little bit when they voted in the state, state election. I think everybody should have the opportunity. I mean, therefore-
Right, but what, let's, let's-
As far as-
The five acre.
The five acres.
I mean, change that.
No, I think because if people say, yes, we do want it-
Yep.
Then people should have the opportunity to grow it. That's, because otherwise, what you're going to end up in, in town is a, a de facto, albeit legal cartel, and-
Well, I mean, there's a lot of farmer in the town.
And there are a lot of five acre.
Yeah.
Can we, can we, is this going to be a problem, having, if we, if we have actually closed the meeting and we start to change something? I mean, how much can we change here with, with no public comment? I'm concerned about that. Because if we're going to change it to five acres, maybe we shouldn't be closing the meeting, maybe we should be.
So I, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I'm not, I'm not concerned about the hearing being closed for purposes of changes. You can always make changes as part of your deliberations.
Okay.
You certainly can't request new information, which is the point that Pat made. I can provide legal counsel, I can answer questions you have about what's been drafted and potential changes. I can't give you new information you didn't previously have, but you can make changes through the deliberative process, but the public has no ability to comment. If you say, we're going to change it to five acre minimum, and you hear screams from the back of the room, you can't allow those individuals to come to the microphone.
Well, that's what I'm asking, yeah.
Right.
Roger, do you have any feelings on the five acres?
Probably best to have the five acre minimum, I would think. But I think that happened when the state recommended an acre and a half, and we adopted or started adopting some other policies. I remember the five acre at first.
Max?
Oh, you know, thousand acres isn't big enough. I, you know, when I voted for marijuana to be legalized, I voted no. But what I read, that question, it just said that marijuana was going to be regulated like alcohol, not that we're going to grow it commercially, we're going to sell it in retail, this or that. The ballot initiative, you know, has taken on a life of its own.
Well, I'm just wanting to deal with the five acres for right now. We'll get to the other-
Right, five acres is, yeah. Five acres is, in keeping with other issue, you know, other uses, regularity.
Paul, do you want to say?
I guess I don't, I'm, I'm, either way, I don't.
Does anybody want to make a motion to change that, or you want to leave it where it is?
I'll make a motion to change it. I think, yes, I'll make a motion that, you know, 4665, that we add a five acre minimum to our requirements for dimensional and performance standards.
One more to second it? Change it from a minimum of five acres for an acre and a half?
I'm just going to vote no, no matter what.
One wants to second it?
I, I guess if we needed to have a real good discussion on it, but I'm not-
Yeah, well, I'd need to second it before we discuss.
That's what I'm saying. So I'm, I'm willing to do it on that basis, but not that I'm-
You don't have to vote for it if you second it, you don't have to vote for it.
Right. All right, I'll second it just for, just for discussion purposes, I'll-
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All those opposed? Okay, so it's five.
Who, who said no?
Those two.
Two, okay.
So it's four to two.
Four, one, two, three, four, five, six. So it's, so it's four to two. Oh, four to two, I'm sorry, okay.
Two, four.
Okay, so we'll recommend that they change that minimum acreage from one and a half to five acres. And go back.
Well, we, then we didn't, I said I did it for discussion purposes, then we didn't have any more discussions.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I think if the, if, if there was a motion to second, then the discussion should have occurred before the vote was taken.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
But he just passed it.
Yeah, that really wasn't the vote.
I think, I think the vote came prematurely. That's, because I, I said-
He went around and asked everybody.
No, no, I know.
All right.
But I specified when I said it, that, that we should have discussion before we-
Okay, what would you like to discuss?
Well, I'm just trying to think, how much, how much RA land, if we put RA in there, and the, and the typical size of an RA lot is 60,000 square feet, right? That's by zoning.
Yeah.
It's going to be a minimum of that. So, how many, how many areas within that zone can they actually do it?
Every single house can do it.
With, five, what, five acres? If it's supposed to five acres?
If it's one acre.
No, 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 if it's-
Five acres.
Five acres, you're, you're going to, you're going to eliminate most of the RA district from that, so I wonder-
No, no.
Okay.
You would, you would, it would be a vast majority.
Is there, okay, that's what I'm asking, I'm just trying to-
All that really would eliminate is the small, you'd have to have five acres, so it would eliminate all the single-family homes that are on acre and a half building lot and doing that. Okay?
I think the IRA district is too broad, personally.
Well, in this way, this is part of-
I know, it does narrow it down a little bit, Rachel.
This is part of what I'm saying, it narrows it down a bit.
That's why I said I was in favor of it, but still to, it encompasses our whole community.
So with the, with the five acre zoning in the RA, because we're kind of, we're, we're pastoral community. I mean, that's hard to kind of, we've never made that distinction. The farm sits right next to a group of houses and, you know, so it's a, it's a combination community in that regard anyway.
Two different, two different animals, so.
So anyway, I feel like the five acre minimum kind of sets some, one more bumper guard against-
So, so let's, let's say that somebody has 20 acres in the RA zone-
Development of-
Or even 10 acres in there, they're, they're, or five acres even, and their, their farmhouse is on that property. What happens if they want to sell the house or they want to divide that property up? And they've already got the thing there, how do you deal with that?
So, but then, that's a transfer, if they're going to sell it, that's a transfer and we review it again. It's, and it is special permit, so it's not like, not just any five acre property is going to get it. And we do have these setbacks. I just feel like it's one more bumper, it's one more, one more hurdle, one more jump that I think is worthy, given that the RA is pretty broad, broad discrimination. That's where I stand. And I, and I don't disagree, I think that that does restrict, I think it, it is another restriction. That's what I'm, I'm voting in favor for the very reason that you're, you know, you have concerns. It's one more restriction.
All right, we'll do this again.
Are we ready?
All those in favor? Do you want to comment?
Mr. Chairman, I think we need to be very clear about the modification, given that your, your recommendation is going to be based upon it. So you're proposing a five acre minimum.
Mm-hmm.
Is the five acre minimum for cultivation only?
Cultivation only.
Is it for cultivation only in the RA district? Cultivation is also allowed.
Everything will be the same, it's just, it'll change it from one and a half acres to the five acres.
But I think we-
In the RA, in the RA. Just in the RA.
Industrial or planned industrial.
Just in the RA. That's why we're talking about it.
Yes.
Okay, cultivation only, just in the RA, five acre minimum.
So let me look back at the use table. Yeah. Because everything is special permit, so it's not like-
Right. And giving the, the other districts that we have, it's, it's bigger than that anyways. There's no small partial things. Okay, all those in favor of changing the size, minimum size lot in the RA district to five acres? All those in favor, raise your hand? All those opposed? Four, two.
Okay. So we've just voted to change it to five acres?
Yes, we've changed it.
In our area zone.
Is there any comment or discussion about the, the bylaws as we review them? Anybody want to talk about anything?
Uh, let's see where I have my question. I'm pretty comfortable that we've chewed on this a good long time.
No, the motion is going to be to recommend this, we forward this to the, to the town, to the town meeting, right?
Yes.
Adam, does it matter which order we were to vote on this particular, these particular items right now, or no?
Not with respect to the two articles that are before you. You need to take separate votes with respect to each.
Okay.
And then the votes are essentially both to forward and to recommend, right?
Right, yes. Okay.
Yeah. Just so people understand that there's a, there's a wide divergence on the board here in favor, no, no, I know, but in, in favor and against it. So we decided to, in all fairness to the town, to have both options available, and that's why we did that.
Does someone want to make a motion about moving the bylaws forward?
So let's start with this one.
I'll make a motion that we, it will be to put the marijuana prohibition onto-
No, we've already done that.
No, we haven't done that.
We haven't done that, but that's, that's a separate.
I'd like to see if we get a, a motion to approve and recommend the zoning amendments to town.
Okay, so the board-
Oh, sorry, this one, my fault, my fault, my fault.
I gave you the wrong one?
I gave her the wrong one. All right, I'll move, since I move that we, what's my wording? That we-
That we recommend and recommend-
Recommend the zoning amendment with the modif-, with the addition of the, tonight's five minimum, and five acre minimum in the residential agricultural.
The board of selectmen.
Yeah.
Say that again.
To the board of selection, to the board of selectmen to put on the warrant for town.
To the board of selectmen.
Vote.
If I could just ask?
Yes.
So it's your, number one, you're forwarding it to the selectmen-
Yes, forwarding, oh, sorry, sorry.
For purposes, but, but that's distinct from making a recommendations at town meeting. So if you intend to do both, you can roll them into the same motion. I just want to be sure that it's both to forward and to recommend.
I am forwarding and recommending.
And then in addition to the five acre minimum we just discussed, you're also incorporating the changes that I made to the version that you have before you tonight?
We already voted on that, I believe.
The version, no, we didn't. So, as, as tonight's draft, with the addition of a five acre minimum in the residential agricultural-
Okay, I need a clarification then, on what we voted for, two and zero, one?
That was to add, to change this draft, because it doesn't include that. So this draft doesn't include the five acre minimum.
Okay.
But I would like to forward and recommend this draft with the addition that we just voted on of a five acre minimum in the RA district to the board of selectmen to put on the warrant for the town meeting.
Sound in? Second it?
Better the second time.
Paul? All right, I'll second it. It's, it's important that we get these bylaws-
Oh, yeah.
To go forward, regardless of what outcomes, because if we don't move these bylaws forward, you know, the town could be liable. If we do nothing tonight, we don't move this forward-
Right.
We could have 10 places in town.
People left wide open.
People left wide open.
Yeah.
You have no, no say of what's going to happen.
Right.
This is our opportunity to promote something that is responsible. Whether or not we prohibit or not, that is a two-part, separate venture. And so, we leave ourselves open without a good plan, I think, you know, we've put some thought into-
I still think the whole RA district, even with the five acre minimum, is too broad of a thing over our community.
Pat?
That's from Furco. So just in further clarification of the nature of this motion that you're making now, typically when there's a zoning bylaw amendment that goes before town meeting, you make a report to town meeting, and I typically help you to draft that.
Sure.
So when you say recommend, are you recommending putting it on the warrant, or are you recommending its passage?
Both, that's-
And, and that was the point that I was making, and, and maybe, you know, I'm, I'm getting a sense as to where the board lies on this, and you've got six members tonight, so maybe there's some sense in separating those motions, because it's one thing to vote to forward it along to the selectmen and ask them to put it on the warrant. It's another thing to say that you, as a board, recommend its adoption at town meeting.
Right.
So I, if your board was unanimous in support, you- So I, if your board was unanimous in support, you could roll it into one motion. If there's a possibility that you might not get the vote even to pass it along to the selectmen, that could be problematic for the reasons that were just described, so maybe you separate the motion.
So maybe.
Why don't we, why don't you make a motion to forward it to the.
Forward it, as amended, this evening's draft as presented by our council with the change that we voted on, um, to add the five acre minimum in the RA to the select board. We're forwarding, I move that we forward this onto the select board.
Someone wanna second?
I'll second.
All those in favor of moving this, or recommending this go forward to the board of selectmen?
Aye.
Raise your hand, aye.
I will forward it to the selectmen.
So it looks like we're five, one, zero.
Five, one, zero. Okay, okay, do you wanna make a motion about recommending it?
Okay, I do, I wanna make a motion to recommend this, um, this evening's draft as proposed by council with the addition of the five acre minimum in the RA district to the select board for consideration on the town warrant.
Are we, are we recommend this to the town, to the town?
Town meeting.
Town meeting, we're voting, yes. Oh, I'm going straight to the town meeting.
This is a favorable report.
I recommend it to the town meeting.
This vote, you're saying that it's favorable?
I'm voting favorable, yes, to recommend it.
Someone wanna second?
I'll second, okay, Kim got it, you get it, Kim.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Three, two, zero.
Three, three.
Three, three, zero, wow. Okay, so it's a mixed vote then. I don't know what we do at that point.
You just reported as a mixed vote, I guess. That's all you did, you reported as a.
Okay, we got it.
Okay, so the last item I guess we need to do is to talk about the, um, the prohibition. Any more discussions about this?
Well, just in, in, have we moved it?
No.
Okay, then we should have a motion and then I'll tell you what I think.
And I might recommend that we do it the same way with multiple motions, cause much like the other, it needs to be forwarded, and then a recommendation needs to be made to town meeting.
I'll make a recommendation that we vote, uh, that we forward this prohibition regulation to the board of selectmen.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor? All those opposed? It's five.
Five, one, zero. This is to forward.
Second motion, I would like to make a motion that we recommend to the voters of the town deerfield to adopt this regulation.
Someone wanna second the motion?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? All those opposed?
Sorry, what are we doing here again, please?
Recommending to the town.
We accept the prohibition?
I accept the prohibition, yes.
Okay, I don't want to vote that, so, I, what was the vote?
You did.
Okay, good.
So why don't you go with that vote again?
No, no, I'm, I'm voting against.
The prohibition.
The prohibition.
That's such a funny thing to do. So it's five, two, four, two.
So it's four, two, two recommended, and two not to.
Can we see those hands again, just for clarity? So this is in favor of recommending the prohibition?
Yeah.
And, the hands?
Oh, two against.
It's kind of a double edged sword, I want the people to have the option.
You already voted that, and so you're forwarded to, now, now you're saying, are you recommending that they vote in favor of the prohibition?
Yes.
So you recommend the prohibition, you want the prohibition to pass if you had your, rather, is what you're saying?
Oh, he's recommending.
It's too late, you voted.
I already voted.
Okay, so it's four, two, zero, right?
Yep.
Okay.
I guess that's all right.
That's it.
Anything else we need to talk about about that? All right, Adam.
I don't think so.
You're all set.
Thanks for many meetings.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thanks for putting up with that.
I have to say, that was a little tricky.
It was tricky.
Yeah, that's just.
I'm not supporting.
Adam, can we document your time for the last five meetings?
I don't think you're right.
No, maybe that can go on the, legally it should be, it was right.
Oh, and host meeting agreement?
It was cost incurred.
It's talking.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. While we're doing it, this was not on the agenda, but we normally do do it.
Yeah.
Do you wanna do the minutes from last?
Sure.
Has everybody let me read these minutes?
Uh, yeah, mostly. I, I, I'm not sure I was at this meeting.
Well, does it say your name at the top?
Yes, no, I was, I just can't remember.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's, that's the meeting.
Stupid.
What did we vote, seven, zero, zero, everybody was there?
I do remember now, I do remember, no, I was there, I was there.
What's that?
She was there.
Everybody was there for that meeting, yeah.
I'm teasing. I remember, King Philip, I even looked it up, I went and looked at the place. Did we vote to support the request for a town planner? We didn't, right?
Yes, we did, I thought we did.
I thought we did too.
I don't think we voted, I think she asked us to support it.
I think that's right.
We did not.
We did not, right?
We didn't vote?
No, it was done right at the end of the meeting and there was no vote.
Okay.
Yep, so it was kind of like, would you just say that you liked it, okay?
Oh, we voted on this RA though.
What's that? We voted on.
Looking at the minutes, looks like the last vote was the same vote we just had.
Let's see, grab a set of the minutes here. Well, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes and then we can have a discussion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
No, we're, we're, discussion, oh, did we just accept them?
Did you have discussion?
Any discussion? I'm, I was just, I think it's fine too, it's good.
I just wanted to move it on.
Good.
Okay, who, who moved it, by the way?
John.
John did.
John, and who seconded it?
Me.
Okay, and Rachel. And were there any changes?
No.
I didn't see any, other than Pat's name should be capitalized.
Six, zero, zero, okay.
Uh, no, I, too many papers, I lost my agenda here.
Yeah, I took it.
Oh, you took it.
Cause this was mine, but.
This discussion of the fence was my.
I can get your copy, I can get home. All right, I don't think we got him here, he's not.
Who's that?
I don't have the agenda, do you have the agenda? I have it here, I just.
I think he's gone.
Oh, I got it, I know, I have it on my phone too, so.
So I think we just move it till next meeting?
Here we go.
Well, we can talk about it and.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
So last meeting, we, um, last meeting we talked about, you know, going forwards with some of the stuff, recommendations, and I think we talked about maybe talking about the, um, in the, that's, with the timeframe that we have tonight, talking about the accessory apartments, and even at that, just for, okay, cause it's, I mean, I think it, all the other stuff deserves a lot of discussion.
Right.
Okay, um, well, do you, um.
Let's table that, you wanna table it, John?
Well, we're, we're gonna talk about the accessory apartments, I, I believe that's what we discussed towards the end of last meeting.
Right.
Maybe we can move on that, or maybe not before the.
Well, there's also stories.
Right, we're, we're gonna table that until.
We can table some, I think, well, let's talk about the accessory apartments, I mean.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I feel that you are accurately representing on the discussion that was at the end of the last meeting, that the list of potential bylaw amendments was too long to address between now, but that because previous work had been done on the accessory apartment bylaw, that might be something to consider here tonight.
Right.
So I did bring for you that draft bylaw amendment that had been prepared through the work of the planning board back in 2014. This is as a result of the zoning recommendations in the housing production plans, I also have recommendations for you, it's been a long time since 2014.
So this would be the draft?
This would be where we could start.
Where we could start.
As has been noted by the building commissioners, the accessory apartment bylaw, and as we had discussed back in 2014, is very restrictive.
Yep.
Unusually so. So you can see as you look at this, that there's some initial recommendations for, um, different ways to expand housing in the community, in different areas in your districts, and then you turn, I believe on page three, it begins to changes, the accessory apartment bylaw, which, there's more taken out than, there's a lot of red line here, so.
I saw, you did this, Pat, you, you made these.
This was down by per cogent council consultation with the planning board back in 2014. Ultimately, there was a determination made not to proceed with any zoning changes at that point in time.
Let me ask you a question about this, I mean, this cannot go on the town meeting once, at this point.
I, I think the anticipation was to have this discussion in hopes of being able to do that.
Would this have to go in front of public?
That's what I'm saying, public hearing.
Have another public hearing, as you can see, it's a pretty complicated recommendation, and just judging of the discussion you have about this one zoning bylaw amendment that's just now going forward, I would have caution about whether you.
Ready to do this.
It would require multiple.
That's my.
Yeah, we, we don't wanna rush any of this stuff.
Yeah.
No, but, you know, looking at, I, I've looked at this, the, the housing strategy before, and I keep seeing the same thing over, and I, and I know that this board has had its differences as far as two-family houses, but if you look at all of these regulations that Pat made, you know, there's, there's a lot of work that goes into it, I'm not gonna say they're complicated, but there's a lot of things that need to go through it, and in our own zoning bylaws, it's even that much more, and I just feel that if we made it as simple as allowing two-family houses, you can do away with all of this, you know, because that way if somebody has a house, a single-family house, and they wanna make a mother-in-law apartment, then they can do it, cause they're just making it into a duplex, then if the parent passes away, they don't have to disassemble it, they, it's still a two-family house.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
There are distinctions in the definitions of a duplex and an accessory apartment.
Right.
And you might want to retain those distinctions, so for example, an accessory apartment bylaw typically requires that the accessory apartment be encapsulated within the existing building, that there be no changes to the outside that make it look like it has two entrances, entrances need to be on the back, parking around, so the idea is that it still remake, retains the appearance of a single-family dwelling, duplex is very different.
Right.
And people might support one more than the other, might find that there are places where one might be more appropriate than the other, so it, it seems like it's a simple thing to say just, okay, duplexes are allowed, but that, that doesn't cover all of the basics.
And, and I get that, but the thing is, take the cen, uh, the Central Village District, you know, people don't have the room where they're gonna, you know, blow up their house, you know, really big, uh, they would probably do as you said, they would, you know, maybe put an entrance off to the side, or put a one room on, something like that, but it still would be just a two-family house. The way it is now, it makes it very difficult, not only for people who want to expand their house, but it's difficult for, you know, the building department to guide them through all of this stuff, you know?
Yeah, the, the current bylaw, yes.
Yeah, and then if somebody, if the initial reason changes, uh, it's usually by the passing of a relative or something like that, now, what do you do with it, you know, then you spend a lot of money to change it back and, I don't know.
But the, the point being that, that is still different from, the accessory apartment's still different from a duplex, so you're kind of still making the case for an accessory apartment without actually making a better case for duplexes.
Well, I, I mean, you know.
I think there's a, I think there's room for duplexes, and if you see in this, in this first page in the use table, after our discussion, we were recommending that more could be allowed in other parts of, of town with a special permit than, than currently are allowed. But accessory apartments, uh, still, you know, they are often limited to a certain square footage or percentage of the existing square footage, so they are a smaller component than typically a duplex, you know, would be divided half and half, uh, so there are some distinctions, so I think there are two things that can work in con, you know, together in complementary fashion, but each meets a slightly different need in the community.
Well, yeah, the, the way I look at it, Pat, is four years ago, we're, we're in, in bigger challenging times than we were four years ago, a lot of these young men and women are coming out of college, they can't get jobs, they're, or, you know, low-paying jobs, and they really don't have a choice but to stay with mom and dad. On the other side, towards the end of life, you've got, you know, moms and dads that don't necessarily require, um, assisted care, but you know what, maybe they don't need to live in their own house anymore, and they wanna be with, you know, so I've, I've sort of watched this happen and have become a little bit empathetic towards it, um, and I just think it's a, it's a good tool, I mean, to keep families together, and I, you know, can there be abuse? Absolutely, I mean, that's, that's, I think, back in 2014, that's probably the way I felt, and I still feel there could be abuse, but just because there could be abuse, does that, you know, is that fair?
Then you have an enforcement issue, doesn't that mean you don't allow everyone to not do it because of that potential? And I, and you know, when you, when you have a chance to look over this, you'll see that this is, this, these changes are designed to provide more housing options in more areas of town, and to make accessory apartments easier to be approved and to be constructed. That's the intent here.
What about our audience, what do they think? You're here all the time now, actually.
She's our watchdog.
Yeah, I know.
I was gonna give you the sign, um, sign regulations if you want, no, the sign, sign, Annalise.
Okay, so, you will see when you get on to page five, there is an area that is both redlined and highlighted in yellow, that is language that was there for you, that was highlighted so you could think about it, because there was considerable.
Page five?
Discussion on page five of the, the zoning for housing, it's item B in the middle of the page that's highlighted. Um, so there's a lot of discussion about affordability, there's affordability and there's affordability, there's the legal standard from the federal and state governments, right?
Which is not affordable, but they're calling it affordable.
See, I think.
And, and the town, the reason why the housing production plan was done, and why a number of these changes are being proposed, is for the town to show progress towards meeting its 10% affordable housing requirement, so as to inoculate you against a.
Unfriendly housing.
An unfriendly 40B development coming in here, when you do not make that 10% requirement, you are subject potentially to somebody coming in under 40B and getting a.
Or moving toward.
I personally feel that if this is, if this is truly, um, an accessory apartment, you're never gonna meet the, the state standard for affordability.
So that's what, so that's why this is highlighted, so the two things that are, two things.
Yeah, yeah, I don't care for that either.
Two answers. So, so you could, you can require that it meet those requirements, and that can help you then meet your 10%, or you could determine that you do not wanna make that requirement, and that's why we had highlighted this, cause that seemed to be a point of contention that the committee was gonna wanna discuss.
I asked a question during that, cause I was involved in that, and the, the thing is that you have to totally remodel the whole house, and you have to meet all the state standards.
Right.
In order to be counted as affordable.
No, but so, so we're not, we're not, we're not gonna have that conversation, because, because if you don't wanna do that, that's fine, and you could leave that out, but it would, you would need to understand that, that any accessory apartments that were built and utilized in town would meet your social goals, but would not meet your goal of the 10% affordability requirement of the state.
Let me shed a little light on this, you talk about all the things, the big thing that you guys haven't mentioned, the only way that you can get any of these, you can have apartments and rent them for $10 a month, it still will not meet the state requirements until you put a deed restriction on your property.
Thirty-year deed restriction.
And that's what people don't want to do.
And they, even if the people accepted that, then the state won't accept it because it has to be, it has to be to a standard that the state's-
I guess, that's the thing.
It's, it's better than any of us live.
I know it. I know it.
But, but it's, it's a deed restriction that really is a big kicker because you, with that deed restriction, yes, if you do that and you got a house and I want to buy it, I can buy it, but I have to live with those restrictions.
Yeah, it's like a 20-year deed restriction.
For the 30 years.
And that's why a lot of people won't do that.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the biggest reason.
So, yeah, so we, you know, this was a point of contention. That's why it's highlighted here in such a way as to provide for that discussion.
If somebody comes in and banks a project that, that meets the state standard-
Where did everybody go?
Somehow the accessory apartments, so they fight them.
Isn't it odd how for the past five meetings, we had a packed house and?
So they didn't come for our charming good looks, I guess.
You know, there's a lot to chew over here, even for those of you that participated in the discussion four years ago. I'm happy to, you know, assist you with this and we can look at the other zoning bylaw amendments as well. I think you would need to decide tonight whether you were ready to proceed.
Well, I don't think we can be ready to decide tonight on this, but at least we're, we're bringing it forward.
Yeah, I think we're thinking about it, considering it. I think it's something we, we've talked about before, worth talking about again, looking at what our neighbor towns have done, what kind of impact it's had. I think that that's something we, Greenfield's, you know, moving with it.
Yes, they've had a particular experience.
Their experience is something that's worth considering, studying a little bit on our part just because they've gone first, and so, good.
And the new building commissioner has himself put together some-
And Kyle has engaged.
Recommendations that, you know, I, because we hadn't begun on this, I hadn't started to do any work to see how his recommendations correlate to these and putting those all together.
Well, I was looking forward to asking him, the town has, has 15 or 20 storage units around the whole town at their different offices. Would they be outlawed at that point?
Storage units?
We're not talking about that tonight.
We're just talking about accessory apartments right now.
That's why I asked the question.
I'm sorry, did I say storage?
We're, we're, we're going to work on this until it's completed.
That's what he's talking about.
Yeah, I know, but we're, we're talking about, we're talking about one and two-family homes.
No, no, we've moved on, she started talking-
No, I'm sorry, I didn't. If I, if I said storage, I misspoke. I was still referring to accessory apartments.
We're going, we're going to work on one item at a time.
That's good. That's fine. I agree with that. Let's just, let's just hold this and work on this and then we'll go back and do the others later because-
Well, he had made a recommendation about this as well. That may have been your confusion. He had spoken, he-
You were listing up all of his recommendations and-
And on accessory apartments.
That's, and you said storage, but that's okay. All right, let it go.
So if you want me to start working and putting his recommendations together with this for another meeting coming up, I can do that, or if you just want to hold off for a while and figure out when and how you want to proceed on that, that is fine as well.
Well, is that, my, my thought is let's work on one thing at a time and just move down the list as we go.
Okay. Do you want me to start working on the accessory apartment bylaw and putting together Kyle's recommendations with these from earlier?
I'd like to know why he came up with this list. What spurred these?
So maybe you need to have him come and make a presentation and then we figure it out.
Well, yeah, I would like to know that also, why.
I think that would be before we do that with you. I think before we set you to that, I think it would be good for us to hear from Kyle. He put a good bit of work into that.
That's right, that's exactly.
And I think that, um, he's going to be the enforcing body, he's the one that's-
I assume he's, he's brought it forth because of issues with enforcement.
He was here tonight. Yeah, and then he had to leave, so I think-
Yeah, maybe we can put it on the agenda for him sometime at the beginning of the meeting when he can actually be here and we can have, there's time enough.
Okay, now are we going to have him break it down and do one at a time or come in and do the whole thing at once?
No, no, we're-
Just accessory apartments.
Just, okay, I vote for just accessory apartments and then if he wants to bring forward another one at another meeting-
That's his other-
All depends how long the presentation's going to be, why, what spurred this list.
I don't think he's going to, I don't think it's, it was just people ask him.
Well, he could go through the list then, I guess. That wouldn't be a big deal. You know, okay, this is why I felt this, this is why, yeah.
And then you guys determine what your priorities might be for how you would address them.
All right, I can agree to that.
Yeah, and that way he doesn't have to come back.
He doesn't have to come back five times.
Fair enough, fair enough, fair enough.
Call them condos, but they're 72 duplexes.
Well, that's, you know, looking through this thing about the size, that's why I, I just don't-
I mean, why not?
Yeah, but you've got a single owner, that's the thing. You have, and-
I'm just saying, you just, you just approve 72 duplexes. You're right.
Well, but-
But it's not just about people.
But they're, they're, it's a kind of association.
So why not let other people and other prices?
You, you end up with-
You've got one manager, not-
If you can't do that.
It's 35 managers.
Outside the Center Village District.
Correct.
Right.
And maybe, maybe our zoning's flawed, maybe we shouldn't allow it in the Center Village District.
Shouldn't.
Kip, is there any talk ever about expansion of the sewer system?
There's a lot of talk about it.
Well, I mean, why, I mean, I just don't-
The sewer district is not.
The sewer district is.
There is a lot of talk about it, but it's very expensive. You know, in today's day, it's, it's outrageously expensive.
And we have current issues.
And we have to deal with the, at least I believe that we need to fix one problem at a time. That's what happened before. They took on this big project, spent a lot of money for papers and they did nothing. So we're, we're, I think we're going to go forward with working in the South Deerfield plant and see how that all works and then move to Old Deerfield.
Yeah, there is a lot of questions that need to be answered, whether you, you put that one, take that one offline and pump it into-
Well, I don't think that, I mean, yeah, it was, it was going to be like 20-
Roger, I'm asking questions. I mean, I, I-
I know, I'm just, I'm just saying, I know, that was a proposal, I'm just laughing, I can laugh. I'm not saying your, your question is not justifiable, but-
Well, maybe if we get that million dollars a year from the pot, we could, I don't know, but-
35 million.
Whatever. But, you know, it was going to be, it's, I think it was going to be 20, almost $20 million to pump from-
Oh, really? That costly? Yeah.
Yeah. It needed like five pump stations.
Say, how far is it going to go?
And then, you know, then not only did it pay for the infrastructure, but to run all of those lift stations, you know, could cost in excess of $500,000. So-
What if we went the other direction?
The number of people that use them in Old Deerfield, I mean, it would be astronomical.
I mean, the technology must be much better today than it was 40 or 50 years ago when these plants were built. It's, I mean, what, has any, I mean, what about like just smashing that one right in and building something smaller?
We are moving outside.
It's just, it's very expensive. It's just very, I mean, you know, we're, we're probably looking at close to $2 million just to make the upgrades to the South Deerfield plant. It was going to be, you know, almost $4 million. And there's only 600 families that use that plant, so it's-
Down, down there?
The South Deerfield.
This one here? 600, that's it, huh?
Oh, and, and if you take, you take away Eagle Brook and the academy, you've only got 16 people that use the Old Deerfield one.
Eagle Brook is on that sewer system? Oh, I didn't, I didn't realize that.
Yeah. It's primarily the academy that's in historic Deerfield.
So there's no problem with head pressure going off of that mountain, is there?
Gravity. No, just-
Just so I can put something in the minutes, are we going to table the housing strategies and the building inspectors' recommendations to a next meeting or to whatever?
I guess, I guess we can.
Yes, let's invite Kyle to our next meeting.
We can do that.
That's the second of April.
Second of April.
Okay.
It's already been set.
Let's ask him and then we'll, we'll then at that point have a clearer understanding of how we want to proceed in terms of what-
Yeah, wait a minute, this isn't our April meeting.
No.
This is an extra meeting for the public hearing.
We've been meeting the way too much.
That's why I thought the marks-
So you're going to need another couple weeks.
See, last meeting we set the second of April, it was the next meeting.
And so if we have him come and we, and he talks us through what, where his priorities lay, where, what he sees as, you know, rising to the top.
Is that a holiday?
I just want to make sure.
It is a holiday, so you have to have a different time.
Next Monday, the second, our meeting is at 7 o'clock?
No, the 16th is a holiday.
We all make mistakes. I've done, I've done that before.
Easter's Sunday.
Seven, let's make it a seven, huh?
I don't think it was too many meetings ago, it was six, and I got a call and I said, oh, be right down.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, what have we got for the next meeting?
I just want to say Max and I were here first and actually Max is here first, but we were here.
You guys get-
Max is holding court here by himself for a while. Exactly. It's just, I, I know it does, I don't get to carry those minutes forward when I'm late, but, you kind of hoped.
So, yeah, I mean, hopefully we'll have a quiet period where we can have some discussion on it. Because this is what always happens. We end up with an issue like this, you know, and last year it was Shergalov, you know, so we never-
And Cumberland Farms and there was a whole-
And the self-storage. It was a crazy year last year.
And, you know, we're all volunteers, you know, and-
Yep.
So 7 o'clock, April 2nd. Kyle's coming. Can I just, yes?
Yep, I'll talk with him.
Thank you.
Um, with that said, I mean, we voted on the minutes, is, I don't think, because we're not in a monthly meeting, we don't need to worry about mail, so I'll make a motion that we close the meeting until I pro-send.
When's our next meeting?
I second it.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. So Rachel, you second it?
Seven. Yes, I did.